Ano mga pinulso po? Ngano nga may kuwan, nganong kawayan mini niyong kihimong kabilya din eh. Mas may mga kawayan kay dili mataya ang kabilya mataya man. So kawayan nagibotang para di ko na mataya. Okay saad. Kung asa mo aba.
Asa mo ang lugar, sa lugar kayo, ang tanamo, atong may ako kay sa pa. Tulun na atay kihimo ina. Purusgi, purusgi pala sa dakong ma. Nganuman. Ma pura man kipal, 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 buka si nito. Ikaduwa nawala, kaduwa parang yaon. Karinikatulo. Naghihimong ira. Grabi na kayo ang mati sa agento ang kabilya.
Bibotang 'yung kabila na daghang kayo. Pila nakabaha, tagpo, nakaimbaha na nagagi, uagin siya maunsa. Kay insak toog kabilya. O sa mga report karoon, atong makita sa mga flood control projects nga ng guba tungod wa yo'y kabilya. Diba? Sumoto'y missing or lacking object. So kung ang object, no, si isa ka project, pati naghanap komplito, ah, ligon kayo. Kana magbuhos ka, uposi sa manini, nganong dili man fine sand pwede ni mo gamit on? Nganong combination man, no, sa graba o fine sand talan din na kabilya para ligon siya. That is synergism, no, diha sa object na maghatag og immovable stronghold. Therefore, my last question diha, who do you think you are? Are you individual player or team player? Sa basketball, kung individual player ka, ang saingalan ni mo? Bugaong. Di mamasa. No, ano ba, ano oh? Hmm. Ah, press on toward the goal, do sa goal, di gil mamakita ka, ka kuwan, di gil makakita og kauban. Pero team player ka, assist, talan nindot kayo, apri nindota, diba? Si Jordan, dili lang akong sa individual, akorbatik, naasi yata na, pero dili singan ak. Ka gil na tawag na nagsalig sa iyang strength, gatanaw siyang kauban, grabi mo assist. Di kapila nag back-to-back champion ang Chicago Bulls tungod sa agento pagka-team player. Okay. Therefore, atong iappreciate ang atong pagka-individual. Atong talent, atong iti manon pagkayo. And then, dun na kay kasing-kasing ang mo join sa atong isik katao kay para sa usak na dakong nga impact. No, sa dili sa LGU, no, ginalan na to ang synergism.
Synergism, ah, talan. Ngano mga atong-ato mang ispin, alam mo dili sa iyong staff, ilan isa, ilan two. Kaya naman, takam pulo aton, synergism, ah. Ginaot mga appreciate na to ang atong isik katao. No, kung mubok, mubok ka sa isik mong pagkatao, do sa inaakan na 'yung kahalay, kahalay ka. So dino mo ilok to, iappreciate mo. Oh, never giving positive. Kay isang na, si Lucifer na naiinom sa tanas, tungod sa iyong pakapositid, 'yang arrogance, 'yang garbo. That's why. Bisan ang pulo Lucifer, the morning star, nindot kayo, pero wat naguinahan mong ngalan og Lucifer siyang anak tungod kay nahila sa ngalan nga sa tanas, diba? That is because of arrogance, no, kana ang conceited ba. So iappreciate ang matag isa, imo kaugalingon, ayokumpere sa uban, og iappreciate ang uban, og join, unsa ang dapat, no, nga kailangan ka dito. Join for common good and for, yata wag na, strong impact sa tuang na, yata nga society. Okay. Dun na ba ikadugang diha, nga mga insights may tungod ni ini about synergism? Sa isbinin eh, ngano dun na session, we have, you have to synergize yourselves toward common goal. Una nga, nga makwangyo ka no, kana ang, ah, di dyo ka gawas lang dun hinong dan, di dyo kamusagot nga, wala kakaroon kayo nganuman. Basig dito ma kurong, di basig din isla masynergize karon, then mamis ang isa ka, isa ka session, diba? So we have to appreciate each other. Kung pinsata, huwag ang uat may isik katao. Salamat Lord sa lesson we have learned this morning. Thank you oh God for making us, creating us very unique, ginoo, as individual. Thank you sa talents and skills, nga maghihatag ka na mo, nga ang imong toyoh Lord, magiging asset na mo sa pag-serve ka ni mo and to serve each other. Salamat oh God. Og salamat ginoo kay, ah, tungod ni ini ginong Diyos, naralis na mo, nga dili kami ginoo magpalabaw si isa-gisa tungod kay nagkalailahhe ginoo. Ang amo ang mga talento, hinoo ang Lord, among iappreciate ang matag isa. Salamat Lord, kay dun na kami opportunity nga makasynergize each other ginoo. Labinasa isa ka project, isa ka goal, or anything ginoo nga kinahangalan og contribution sa imong kaugalingon. Ginaot nga imong kaugalingon kanunay, available ginoo sa pagtabang, paghatag, impact ginoo sa among sosyada, ugasa kami. Na diin Lord, ingon imong mga katauhan, nagkahiusa kami. We have the same creator namo ikaw. Imong toyoh Lord, kaming tanan, mag acknowledge ka ni mo, magdaig ka ni mo, og magsimba ka ni mo. Continue to bless Lord your people, the legislators oh God. Sa ilang session karon, ang kaalam mong langit on maggovern ka nila ginoo. I bless Lord ang ilahang mga ordinances, ilahang mga resolutions, nga ang toyoh Lord God, para sa palay ng pag-progress ginoo sa among municipality sa Ipin. Liguna sila, og isynergize sila ginoo sa matag isa. I bless Lord ang mga staff, ang wisdom na kinahangalan, mga visitors nga niyakaron, nga ma-accommodate unsa mga needs nila ginoo. And continue oh God to bless all of us, the whole LGU family, and all the Ipinili'ns oh God. Into your mighty hand Lord, among icommit, among kaugalingon diya ka ni mo, for your continuous blessing and continuous protection. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Mayong buntag sa tanan.
Check my dis. Check, check, eh, my dis. Check di my dis.
Thanks. I would like to request everybody to please rise as we welcome the Sangguyan Bayan Maze together with our presiding officer, Honorable Anamel Camacho Oligario, and our secretary, Madam Estelita Silvano Igia.
Okay, good morning. Our 13th regular session is served by call to order. Pambansang awit please.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Tayang magiliw, hebas sa si Rana. Palaw ng puso, sadi tipoy kubay. Lu pang viriram, kuya kanang magipin. Saman lu lupin, ikapasi sigil. Sanagatap toto sa si Boyat, salami kaukaw. Ayunagatap toto kaawit sa pantayang minamahal. Apisakap toto kaawat kuyatun, mayanak ipinipin. Kapituhin akarot nga kayan, pamayri la pinipinip. Lu managawaw ka war, habikpatsik ka, kue nganik sa piripon. Ami minayanap, patay ng ame, apamatay ng kahil sayo.
Can we ask our secretary to put it on, please?
Good morning to each and everyone. Welcome to the 17th regular session. Present for today's regular session, Madam Chair. We have Honorable Vice Mayor Anamel Oligario, Honorable Glenn Ian Sabihoan, Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasim, Honorable Dayan Catalunya, Honorable Eric Alibutan, Honorable General Borner Andalahaw, Honorable Ilias Dangpalan, Honorable Joel Eball, Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Junior, Honorable Trixie Mil Palalon, Honorable Roy Andy Oligario, and we have Honorable Alapid Muhammad. On record there are nine, Madam Chair, we are in courtroom.
Since we are in forum, let's go to the adoption of the Order of Business, Madam Secretary.
Madam Chair, ah, Madam Chair, I'd like to move for the adoption of the Order of Business. Second, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Honorable Sabihoan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are now in the visitors hour and we'd like to welcome to the Sangguyan Bayan Session, Madam Chair, the licensing officer of the municipality of Ipin, in the person of Mr. Donovan Asibron. Ah, he received an invitation on, ah, some allegations, Madam Chair, affecting his office, so we will accommodate our visitor for that effect, Madam Chair.
Before that, please, suspension of the rules, please.
I move for the suspension of the rules, Madam Chair, to accommodate our visitors.
Second.
Once again, good morning, no? I'm sorry for the last time, I was not able to attend this sessions because I attended East of Doing Business Forum held in General Santo City for the finalizations of an online applications of business permit by next year. So I happy to inform that our LGU is one of the recipient for the East of Doing Business Online Transactions by next year. Mister Chair, I would like to praise this august body with regards to alleged anomalous transactions being held in my office as my capacity as supervising administrative officer. Yes, it is true because it is investigated by the Municipal Mayor's Office through Municipal Administrator's Office for these anomalous transactions. I submit myself to this august body that there is a recommendations pending to the office of municipal administrators because up to now it's still on investigation. There is a recommendations for this poor personnel of mine as a kapaas to inform because this is our co-members of our church. He wrote a letter to our church to inform about this two personnel, a poor personnel of mine who made this anomalous transaction, Mister Chair. As a supervising administrative officer of this office, I always lay the discretion of our municipal mayor as to the discretion of these investigations because until now it is ongoing investigations, Mister Chair. Maybe that is my stand on these invitations to praise this august body.
Okay, so what's the pressure of the august body?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair? Ah, okay. Ah, my only question to Mr. Donovan is, from your end, as the head of office, aside from the ongoing investigation that is being spearheaded by the Administrator's Office and the Mayor's Office, ah, may I know, or may we know if, what is also your action regarding the alleged anomalous transactions being done by some of your, ah, are they regular employees?
No sir, they are job orders.
Job orders?
Ah, I would like to narrate no, a story. Okay, where it came from. Okay. The first thing, why this poor personnel made post accusations? Besides, they they made an statement through one of our leaders here with regards to these transactions, but that is not the real issue there. The real issue there is, they made their result of a drug test fake. They fake the result of their drug test, that's why from the source, also coming from my personnel. I immediately called a meeting for this problem. So in that meeting, I challenged them to speak for the truth. Impact, I give them on how many days. But because that is spearheaded already, until the human resource personnel recommends that the drug test that they submit, the human resource, through validations of that entity where they conducted drug test, there is a certification that is not true.
Okay, ah, Mr. Donovan, you said that they faked the result of their drug test?
Yes sir, yes sir.
So the result of the drug test, ah, of course, it was a requirement by the local government unit to be filled?
Yes sir.
Okay, so meaning the result is the exactly the opposite?
Yes sir.
So meaning these people are where? Positive for the use of illegal drugs?
That's why sir, I challenge them because the reasons they give to me is ulang pila, uli kwartaipa drug test.
So what I resolve?
Akos sila ginnan sir. Kung dili na tinood nga inyo ang result, paraktismo, kay umu dili mo paraktis, hangtud ka ron, magpabili ng, dua kasi i, kung dili ka magparaktis, adik yuka, kada kay gitago.
Correct.
So that's why siguro sir nga, ang ilang kuwan good, pagatun nila naku, sir. Amin manamunamuk, ikaw mo ikuwan namuk, kanang utabang? Ikaw kita ang bitan namuk chance, ka ron, oh, nadiskubrehan na, inyo ang problema na.
How about, how about taripa? Ngama nga piki nga taripa sa inyong opisina with my signature?
Ma, that is correct ma'am, no? Kaya until now, na may mga fake nga taripa nga gisubmit po dito sa Administrator's Office. Actually ma'am, kani pagpatawag nila dito, ni angko ni sila ma'am, nga ilahaning gi jae nga ina ni nga kuwan kay, namagot silang upat na ikanang kuwan ba IT. I think ah, I don't know, unsa gumi kalidad, aning mataakay, may mapod mo kuwan, manipulate. So as to then ma'am, I submit nga kaya nila ng kuwanon buhaton.
But actually, Mister Donovan, ikaw ilang gi kuwan?
Yes ma'am, that's why ma'am, I am here.
Department head ang katulog kunu nila, it's a department head ang dakong bahin.
That's why ma'am, I challenge them, kasi naabot manis sa kuwan good ma'am, local church. Pwede gani nila dito isulti ang tinood, to drug my name, pwede kaya nila isulti na. Pero up to now, ang ako lang nakita, because of their outburst emotions during that time, that akong gepakita sa opisina nga, dili lang kay amo ang isuon na adiyah, pati ang ubang mga religyo naasa akong opis, nga wala ko ikuwan, iipili, ichallenge gina kuwan ni sila. Kaya ang isan ako kana stop, mo'y nagingon nga, naa sila ikipiki. That's why as a registered criminologist, we always stand the motives of crime. I think that motives dragging my name is because of their emotions. But I always appreciate, no, if they can stand on their allegations against me.
Ah, Madam Chair.
We'll just wait for the results, sakwan?
Yes.
Investigation?
Yes, exactly.
Kaya rather than dinhita, mas may nan dito nalang kang mayor siguro nina problem atu ihatag.
Yes, we are not the right forum to fully investigate, Madam Chair. So as mentioned by our visitor himself, that there is already an ongoing investigation, so, so be it. We will wait for the result of the investigation. Ah, but before we proceed, Madam Chair, I'd like to request that you will acknowledge the presence of our regional, oh, regional, can PCL president for Sampungasibugay, Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasim.
Good morning. Ah, Honorable, ah, Honorable, Mister Donovan, just put in record tanan sa imong mga observation siguro.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Para naakay kuwan.
Yes ma'am.
Madam Chair. Yes, Honorable Eball?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clarified. Why is it that the investigation was conducted by, or now is going, conducted by the the municipal administrator? My first question is, ah, do we have an official complaint about this? Because remember, that one time when the Honorable, ah, Alcoriza made a privileged message, ah, requesting the committee on market to conduct investigation on the perimeter building on situated at the public market. A committee on market, um, did overpart in aid of legislation. Again, in aid of legislation. Again, in aid of legislation. So that is why the licensing division is part of the, part of the operation, the local government unit. Why is it that this particular problem is not referred to the committee on? What particular committee para unta ni siya mainvestigahan? Sa ato ang, sa sangguni ang bayan in aid of legislation. To be fair to all departments involved, ugna may mga inanik. That's why I'm asking Madam Chair, is there really an official complaint about this? And may I suggest that this would be taken by the committee concerned in the sangguni ang bayan?
Actually siguro ang pagtawag, pagtawag nato din hinohas query lang ni atu atanan. And then siguro kang mayor and sa atong administrator, sa ilahang kung unsa may lang observation, I think there's a insakto nga kuwan nga mo investigatang, we also have gravans nga kuwan diba? Natay gravans. So I think that's the time, ato lang hulaton ang result sa observation o kuwan ni mayor. Kung asa niya i-recommend na nga problema. Yes, Honorable Catalonia?
Um, Madam Chair, um, this is actually not a query, no, but it's more of like a request on the head of the licensing division. Um, since this is a pressing problem at the moment, and I know that people are made aware of this. So of course, as we are rendering service to our constituents and public, can we, can we assure them from the division, from the licensing division na, if they will have or mga magkuwan bitaw future transactions with them na wala na ng mga fake nga amounts or kanang fixers kainan nila. So maybe kana lang akong di-request from our division, from the licensing division na we assure, we assure our clients na dili sila maka-experience ano in the future.
That is well taken ma'am, in fact, I always, this is my battle cry of my office, to go online transactions. Because of online transactions, we can ease in this kind of fake documents. That's why I attended the forum on General Santo City last week to avail this online transaction beginning January.
Is it true nga katong gahapon na kaya mukat napod ang treasury kay wala sa ilahang listahan, wala sa ilang computer, ang namayan, wala na ka-register?
Wala na ka-encode.
Wala na ka-encode, punang mayan sila.
I don't know.
Wala 'yung ma-complain gahapon sa mga franchise nato.
Yes, ma'am, I don't know kung naingan na ma'am, but still, I submit our office for inquiry on that matter.
Okay, sige. Then we'll be happy napod sa kang...
May have follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Unahang san ako si Honorable Catalonia?
Madam Chair, since we are just starting with the online program, and there will be glitches, that is understandable, as we are going through adjustment process. But I'm sure that the offices are doing their best, no, to also satisfy our clients. So maybe for the first few weeks, or maybe on the first month, makasabot manggita ano. But definitely, that will be answered later on, dili na pwede. So karoon, we ask, we ask our clients to also bear with us through this transition, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Catalonia, Honorable Ebon.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. May I know from your end, Sir Donovan?
Yes, sir.
The existence of our play markets along national highway? May I ask from you, or may we know from you? Ugna ba na mga business licenses ning nagbaligya?
Uh, with regards to local government code, if that is within five to seven kilometers, that is not allowable to have a play market unless the barangay jurisdictions over that play market acquired an ordinance that they allowed that. For example, in the barangay Tiayon, I think they have these resolutions that they allowed the play market on the road, uh, road, uh, right side of the road, which is a clear violations on our local government code. Not only on the matter of business, but on the matter of zonal zoning law or ordinance. That's why sir, I visited this barangay operating this play market if that is followed by local government code, according to them, they have only resolutions and ordinances of this barangay to allow that play market.
Resolution?
Resolution, ah, no sir, ordinance coming from barangays, let's like what happened in Sanito. They have a play market because of their barangay ordinance.
Okay, so what do you mean is that, like for example, as what you said, barangay Tiayon, is there really an existing ordinance declaring that part of the national highway be considered as their play market? Because we are is here on the process of having this ordinance encouraging 28 barangays to put up a play market, but it is one of the requirement. In fact, we have that national law, we cited the provision of the national law that it is strictly prohibited the use of national highway. Second, we have, I could still remember during our time, we have that ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Um, that play market must not be established within the three kilometer radius.
Five, sir, three to five kilometers, sir, yes, sir, that is correct.
So if we consider that even Tiayon, adili ginasigurado ko, if they have that ordinance, that ordinance must be reviewed by the sangguni ang bayan.
It cannot be superseded our Republic Act, sir, if that is national law.
No, what I mean is that, what, what, what was the basis? For example, if they cited national law? Because we in our, in our play market ordinance, we also cited national law prohibiting the use of national highway.
That's why sir, I challenge always the department assigned on these implementations in accordance with national law. I don't know what is the pleasure of zoning, the pleasure of engineering, because they have a power also to stop these illegal operations if they will follow the provisions of the law. So in acquiring business permit, sir, there are two things. If the barangay allowed issuing barangay clearance, that they allow that play market, then wala time mo sir, kay ultimo ang barangay, gi allow nila, that is zoning, uh, business zone area, they declare that. But if our zoning department here in the LGU and the engineering will function as powers given by them, by the local government code, I think this play market that you believe that illegal, and they can stop?
May I, Madam Chair, if I may? May I read to you Republic Act number 7061? Which provides that, or states that it is explicitly prohibits the use of public roads such as provincial and national highways to prevent any disruption to traffic flow as well as sidewalks allocated for the play market thereby rendering it an unlawful activity. So that is why, Madam Chair, may I ask the, the attention of the barangay Tiayon? If it is really true that they have that barangay ordinance, so that we could at least correct it?
Uh, in addition, sir, no, kani maguna, sugun maguna sila, sir, atong COVID kay naabay katong restriction. Ang problema lang, bisagwa ni COVID, napanayon naman noon. Then misasawa naman naghatag ognuti, sir, with the aid of ordinances ato apung municipyo. Once dili pod mo ak, ang other agency ano, pili or gapo na tong implementation. Actually, that is a violation, that is a violation if we will see the provisions of the law.
Okay, so may I ask Madam Chair? Are they now really given the business permit?
No, sir, up to barangay only.
It's thirty, thirty thousand sa barangay na siya, thirty thousand na.
Kana, ang agong...
Ang akong pangutan na is, ah, dali er manggugay pagdeklara na kadi, maorani among gross sales. My question is, kita gaan pagyunan sila o business permit para makapadain sila sa ilang baligya?
Uh, there are, kwan sa no, two things in acquiring business permits. One is if you fall within thirty thousand up capitalizations, you need to acquire business permit. But if you fall thirty thousand below, under the local government code, you fall barangay business clearance.
So precisely, Madam Chair, dili sila mo qualify to be issued business permit. Kay klaro man dyan kayo na gugimong kwintahan ang gross sales, ano mamaligya mga isda, dya mamaligya even og gulay, modern thirty thousand naan muli.
Ata ang gini mo, sir, ang one, sir, dili karingon makasulod sa barangay business, kani gitawag ng barangay business clearance. Actually, the barangay cannot issue business permit, even barangay business clearance, kung ano ay pasikaranan. Because stipulated in the provisions of the law, in the local government code, only local government unit can issue business permit, correct?
So wala sila, sir, wala sila business permit?
Technically, Paul, Paul gini sila, sir, kung may issue ang kuwan, ang LGU, galing lang, nagsugod gini sila baligya, dya because of one legal document nga ilang gituhan, na pwede, which is the barangay business clearance. Oo, may na magtax map, miss sir? I would like to share also this, one of, so that the, our good legislator can maybe recommend, no? Take for example barangay Tainan. Barangay Tainan, if you look in front of the provincial hospital, bibo na kaidito. Pati naghanan, ano yung mga boarding house, uguwan pang mga negosyo. When my team undergo tax mapping on that, the barangay chairman wrote me in accordance with the law, you are not allowed to seek for business clear, business permit in this entity. Because under the local government call law, they are fall on thirty below amount, thirty K transactions below amount on the barangay level. Pero ako kung ingan good ang kapitan sa kuwan, sir, through secretary niya. nga the essence of business permit is not only for revenue, for business tax. The essence of business permit is regulations. Mas supersede magunimo ang sanitary, kung kita gaan ni mo nag barangay, gi allow ni mo dya, niya gi bag sanitary. Mga luya na dya, mga poeso na dya. Is supersede po ni mo ang balao sa Bureau of Fire Protection, which is also part of regulations of acquiring business permit. That's why, siguro, with the good legislation, with the person of Honorable Ray Andrew. Ray Andrew, was he? Ah, Ray Andrew, Oligario. I recommend, sir, kung pwede na to, one of the time nga atong tawag ning mga barangay officers, sir, to enhance this provision of the law, sir.
So I think we'll just refer this to a certain committee, committee on market and committee on rules. No, to para masureten ang discussion nato, ano kay, para sa committee na lang nato i...
Napaiisa ma'am, nga makahatag po, generating income sa ephil, no? Kanang online transaction karoon?
Yes.
And mga GCAs payments, wala pa sa atong ordinance, but other cities, when I benchmark, they have this ordinance to look for revenue in favor of our LGU.
Uh, Mister Donovan, renewal of license karong January, diba?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we ask that kuwan katong secretary sa isa ka lawyer? Na dili siya magkuwan dinha?
I'm appeal sa ease of doing business, ma'am.
Dili kanang magnotario?
Ah, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Kay dili na pwede?
Yes, ma'am.
Wura na siya kafor sa signature sa lawyer.
Actually, ma'am, katong...
Akong gibu ya, kay dinha ga notario? Isa to, iniingon daba siya recommended by Mister Donovan?
Ano ni ma'am, naabot sila dery ma'am, through, through letter of, through letter of one of the kuwan, ma'am. So I think because there is a essence of ease of doing business that collected na ang tanan clearances. So instead, nga mo ato pa dito kay ma notario, so ako sila gi kuwan, ma'am, pero that is open for everybody.
It should be open for everybody?
Yes, sir, for ease of doing business.
Open for everybody, but the lawyer must be present?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
But not the secretary?
Noted, ma'am, noted, ma'am.
Madam Chair? Okay, Madam Chair?
Ang tanan lang ko, sir, sir Donovan, katong upat katao ni mga under investigation, asa, asa lang to sila karoon?
As of today, sir, wala pa sila memo kuna dawat, kay pending pa man ang investigation, sige pa magkuwan gapo, sir, gather.
Gareport pa gapo sila sa imong opisina?
As per advice atong municipal administrator, sir, I don't know kung asay lang assignment karoon.
Pero napagapon sila gareport pa sila?
Yes, sir, kay ako mismo, wapa man ko i, nadawat po nga dismissal nila.
So gareport pa sila, so tanan sa lain opisina?
Wala ko kabalo, ma'am, kay tulok semana, kurumigid may niwa.
As sir, ato lang pangutan na ng HR.
Kita na, iman. Pero dapat na ang HR, no, kay I'd like to be clarified, this sangguni ang bayan should be clarified on this. Unsa manggi di ay ng level sa activities nga dili maayon nga, pwede na nato silang pahunong ng trabaho? Oo, dapat, this should be prevented from reporting to your office, because they can do it anytime again.
Up to kuwan, sir, up to now, for the past three weeks, siguro, magdagan na upat. So katong pagkuwan sa ilang drug test, wala na sila pakita dyan sa opisina.
Oh, at least sigurado taan na, kay basig na agiapon ang, consider magut sila ng mga fixers, diba?
Adili, sir, kay ako mismo, gini, sir, ako kuwan nila dyan. Oh. Kuwan na na ilahang trabaho ba?
Kay katong i-sulti ni, at sa atong presiding officer, tinood to, kaya na napoy mga driver sa kuwan nga ni Adto, nga naghatag lo sila o kwarta. Onya, wala na process ang ilang franchise, ma'am. Mga unsi na na ka-driver.
Apinsa sa lista, siguro na, sir, karoon dito sa...
Driver nga naang ilang tudada sa maylan bank.
Ah, muna na, sir, api na sa lista dito, sir. Nakuaan ba na sila mga kuantanan, statements? Yes, sir. Okay. Nakuaan, sir.
Naakuno i bookkeeper sa imong opisina, nasweldo as JO, diri sa municipyo, pero bookkeeper siya.
Ah, kana, ma'am.
Nag bookit, bookkeeper yan.
Kana, ma'am, di kuwan, ma'am, kay...
So wura, kita'y gasweldo, siya ganegosyo.
Ah, isarama ako na ilang bookkeeper, ma'am, pero wala na dya, as, as bookkeeper, katong nada sa information? Nagdisiplina na...
Nasa sulod sa imong opisina dya ko no?
Ah, sige, sir, akong ipa, kung ipain out na, ma'am, siya nagbookkeeper. Nagbookkeeping? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Mister Donovan. Next visitor, please?
Okay, thank you, Mister Donovan, asibron. Our next visitor, Madam Chair, is from the Municipal Economic Enterprise and Development Office, Mido, in the person of Teddy Mananaong and the rest of the team from the slaughterhouse. Uh, this is invitation para to shed light, no, unsa man ang mga issues there sa slaughterhouse operation.
Kisa may rumore pa, sir? Si Rico, okay?
Ah, sige, Rico.
Hadlo na ng tulo.
Rico Baricuatro, meet inspector.
Okay, good morning to each and everyone. Especially to our municipal vice mayor, Namel Siuli Gario. Naamidri karoon, kay gipatawag mi proa, mi kay balo, unsa problema? Kana, rah? Kayo, oh, historya, unsa problema, among matubad.
Yeah, okay, I think Mister, Honorable Ebon lang nagpatawag dino. Yes, Honorable Ebon?
Thank you very much, sa to ang mga empleados sa slaughterhouse. I know that they already, uh, this information or this communication, Madam Chair, reaches already at their end. One is that we already requested the office of the mayor, and in fact, they were already given a copy of this letter request approved by the mayor and the Mido. Ngang among gihang new, ang flag raising ceremony for the second, third, and fourth Mondays will be held at the Mido.
Ah, sa market?
Sa market. We explained to the mayor that dito rata sa merkado, kay paradili kayo mahampar ang operation sa market and slaughterhouse. Kay ugderimo sa ato ang, ato ang municipyo, unsa uras na siya mahuman, ah, maapitahan ang atong trabaho sa merkado o ang slaughterhouse. Ginjan ko dinyo four times. I already reacted and requested the Mido to inform you. Last Monday was the fourth time. Wala gi gapon mo. That's why I am asking your presence here. Di mo madalan na to dito sa atong sabot-sabot. So, dery tabi historya, labon nga dagan po tagi take up nga ato ang, ato ang uwan nga issues. That's why I am, I am really informed. Every Monday, Madam Chair, I go with the group. Ah, dito dugo nagaten o flag raising ceremony. Parajud nga, I have, I will be happy close sa kaning kontak and trabaho po sa ato ang mga personnel sa local economic enterprise.
So, it's seven thirty, it's wala na siya ihaw?
Seven thirty.
Yes, sa kay seven forty-five man siguro atong flag ceremony diba?
Yes ma'am. Na, na isigund, sigunda.
Oo.
So, na rapo ihaw.
Yeah, okay.
Pero kana siya Madam Chair, pipilara ga may lang kayo ba? Perhaps na isa, na duha. So, we can assign somebody there, mabilin dito. Not siguro dili na, siguro nga, tanang panahon na lang dyan, mayon sila, tuami sa municipyo ga appeal o flag raising, bisag wala. Another thing, Madam Chair, why I put up the attention of this slaughterhouse? Because based on our verbal, verbal, what is this? Ah, paghistorihanay na to and understanding that, a proposed budget for the slaughterhouse, um, what is this? A project offered by the National Meat Inspection Service, according to you sixteen million. Now, here comes now the Mowa, which was already approved by the sangkuning ang bayan, amounting to only sixteen million. So, which is, diri siguro tamutuo aning Mowa kay sixteen million man eh. Now, may, may, ang akong kabalaka lang, ugmagowid daan eh nga, nga proyekto, we might as well again, build a, an slaughterhouse with more or less the same area sa ato ang slaughterhouse karoon. Take note that that slaughterhouse that we established now, ah, ugwa ako na sayo, ni cost na ug eighteen million. Eighteen million na, that time. Ah, I do not know, appeal na ba tong tanan-tanan, mga etsetera, etsetera na. So, now, we are purchasing equipments now, in fact, as I said, the storage lang dinyo dito. Dipasagdan kali dinyo tong inyo ha dito mga tables, butagana, unsa-unsa pa to naka stainless steel. Then nakatiwang-wang na dito sigawas, wala dinyo hiposa. Now, again, ang akong butpasabot, maghimot tagilanan ang slutters, sigurado ka tanga, masulod na dito, wakali na to ang nagamit, kewa na isulod. Wala, dili kaya ba? Dili maigo ug isulod. So, unsa una na to karoon, again, mo, mo investa na bag another millions of pesos, then more ready gapon.
I think sixteen million is ang ato ang kuwan sa L G U.
Actually, we have a, we have already approved a memorandum of agreement between the local government unit to B P and the National Meat Inspection, N M I S. Ah, they are, this project will total to sixteen million. However, because of that partnership between the N M I S and the local government unit to B P, we will only spend fifty percent of the total cost. And I think, Madam Chair, the, the, the project will improve our existing slaughterhouse for us to meet the double A standard. That's the purpose of the N M I S Mowa between the local government unit to B P. Ipa standard na to siya sa double A. So, I do not, I, I don't think Honorable Joel, nga dili na to, murag atong maligsan ang atong existing karoon slaughterhouse, but we will improve it so that the, that's within the, the agreement, the Mowa between the L G U E P and the N M I S. It improve to really meet the double A standard slaughterhouse.
Okay, thank you, that information, Madam Chair. Okay, maminaud ako sa inyo karoon, pila gud ng, ah, sigun sa inyo ang historya with the N M I S. Pila jud ang ama, for that particular project, how much?
Ang, ang sabot magudana sa N M I S, eight million ang sa L G U, eight million po sa national. So, sixteen million tanang total na na. So, nagabilta sa ilahang program nga fifty-fifty.
Okay, so fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty.
But what we agreed on the Mowa, Madam Chair, is, ah, twelve, six-six, diba?
Sixteen.
Sixteen ba, sixteen?
Yes, sixteen sa Mowa.
So, may apology, wala dyan napu, pero ako na hinom na ma murag six.
Oo. Sixteen sa Mowa. I was even expecting that it would be at the rate of eighteen million. However, I was happy that it was only at sixteen, so that our share also fifteen percent will lower down to only eight.
Okay, now, in our plan to at least improve the quality of services, mayon takaroon nga, okay, mag-double A ta. Will that amount suffice para mahimong double A ka na sixteen million? Who will implement that?
Additional information also, Honorable Joel, that with our, with our plan to invite N M I S, actually, this is no longer a plan, because we have already approved the agreement. Honorable Congresswoman of the Second District of Sambongasibugay, Honorable Doc Marley Hofer Hasim, will also put some.
Fifty million.
How much, vice?
Honorable Catalunya, was it fifty million?
Ah, is member Catalunya made a resolution.
Oh, yes, oo. So, that's an additional funds budget for the improvement of our slaughterhouse.
So, is it okay ka sa National Meat Inspection Service nga i-modify ang ilahang plan? Usbon ang ilahang plan? Because the budget there depends on the, ah, what is this, program of work? Madam Chair, anyway, my, my, my concern only, Madam Chair, is that, dapat unta siguro, ato ba lang taon, unsa kadaku ni slaughterhouse ah. So, that kana wala nagamit na to ng mga facilities nga na diha ro nakatiwang-wang na. You try to see, outside the public market nakatiwang-wang ratong ato ang mga stainless steel dito ng mga gamit. Ang akong point nga, unta pasulod siya nga magamit na. And aside from that, we spent millions of pesos for our facilities na karunya. We cannot use that, because kulang ang ato ang kurinte, ang atong power dito is only good for single face, and we need three, three face sa kurinte dina sa ato ah. And I, I believe this must also be considered para ma-upgrade ang ato ah, makaingon ta nga, ma-reach na to ng double A. That's my point, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Okay, we'll refer this to your committee, Committee on Market. Yes, Honorable Catalunya.
Yes, I think we are still in the process of requesting no amount from our good Congresswoman to provide us this facility. So, regarding to the programs of works, maybe it is not completed yet, and the whole planning process is still, I think it's still in, not yet full. So, I think it is not bad if we can come, probably collaborate with the representatives. If not, with our Congresswoman, because she's busy, we can collaborate with our representative, because she's very open. No, I, I actually have met her, discussed with her regarding sa programs sa health. She's very open, and she is very accommodating as to the request of, on our end. So, since request process pa man eh, pwede pa yun ta, mo sit down with her to discuss about our concerns. And regarding sa katong mga machines, if they are still operational, if we can accommodate, I include this, a planning of the building para mayutilize na sa tong mga white elephant na tong mga equipments.
Madam Chair, in addition, ah, to the concern of Honorable Joel and even to the concern of Dr. Dayan, ah, we appreciate the, the intensity of, you know, the interest of our committee chairman in the Committee on Market to really put in place everything, especially in the slaughterhouse. Anyway, we have already approved that memorandum of agreement between the L G U E P and the N M I S. Ah, there is an assurance, Honorable Joel, that the engineering department, marisolve na tong atong mga issue nga katong mga items dihangwa gigamit, will visit, will conduct a site inspection in the E P L slaughterhouse, and with that visit, they will put everything in place kay partnership na mantah with N M I S. And secondly, as to the additional budget, and perhaps to the additional development of the E P L slaughterhouse, again, as suggested by our honorable chairperson, our vice mayor, Namel Oligario, we will refer this to the Committee on Market, so that the Committee on Market can make recommendations directly to the office of the Honorable Congresswoman, Doc Marley Hofer Hasim. And I know, and we are very much sure, that she will accept all of our recommendations. So, that's my suggestion, Madam Chair, as to the budget that the Honorable Congresswoman is promising for the development of our E P L slaughterhouse, I move therefore, that this preparation shall be given to the Committee on Market. Ah, of course, the Committee on Market will make use of our engineering and even the Mido for the preparation of our proposal to Honorable Congresswoman Marley Hofer. That's my motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Alcoriza. Maybe we can also ask Honorable Hasim, no, to help our chairman sa Committee on Market nga makipagmeeting kang, doctora, kang Congresswoman Doc Marley.
This is a very good.
Last concern, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Last concern. Para ma-excuse na sila kuwan. Wala na ba mo parking within the vicinity sa slaughterhouse as what we agreed?
Ah, sir, murag, ah, dat, dat time nga nagvisit ka dito, na ginag parking, tungod sa, ang katong imong graba nga, dipadilibir, wakpe juda katag, magliso dong parking, kena amansa kuwan ni, gitapok man dito, wak mana katag, wak maginig kaput parkingan sa mong kuwan, dito ginusa, may sampalok. Dayon, katong ay mong kuwan de, sir, nga ay mong.
I do not know why, ni abot na siyang sila kadikada nga nagpabilin ang atong problema diha sa kawat-kawat, kana dimoy-dimoy, kay ipang sulod na dito sa Yubaks. Tabunan sa ilahang dipanggamit nga bullyingon ko na sa slaughterhouse. Mugawas rapo ang mga motor with our inspection sa ato ang security guard nga nasayang. Nalipay galimi, Madam Chair, na-close na gud ang intero, intero slaughterhouse? Yes, that's, it's really true. Salamat, na-siraan mo siya, pero ano na arigay ko ikaw.
Ah, sir, kung kanang kawat nga ay mong giyon sir, dili mi kapasangil ano sa ilaha kay, kamu mismo ang taga-market, naamoy tagsa-tag sa katao, mauna gaya katrabaho sa inyo hang, karneh, gikan pagiyo, hantod na human, hantod sa tinae, sila nagbitbit. Dili mi kapaiinon sila nga, kana gikawat na nila, gida laman na nila pa yun sa merkado.
Madam Chair, it's not our responsibility to look into the operation of this slaughterhouse. Oo, damo na silang tao, nag-ihor mapunasya sa Mowa. It is your responsibility and obligation, part of the operation.
Yes sir, pero dili namo siya maidinti parkong kina gikawat na nila kay isik. Ilaha man ang, sila may tagiya, sila may gadalapay yun sa merkado.
So, acti, I think ang niyang dipasabot, Honorable Ebol, na rapo sa iyo mga tao ang kahimo. Kay sila may gabantay, sila ang naadinha sa pagihaw. So, that's why po, alangan po, i-check nila ilang kawgalingon, na moda kuwan na iiyahang dipasabot karoon.
I would like to emphasize here, nga dili naingon nga kinawat nga gi, dipangdisplay na dya, d'tos merkado no?
House to house.
Dipang hiposa dito sa Yubaks, Yubaks pas motor.
Ano na lang siguro atong himo on no, kay murag ni taas na kayan discussion na to kabahin ana. Ato na lang siguro i-request a security to check all the Yubaks before mugawas.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Why I did this? Because it's not only a, a, a month, dikada naninga sakit.
Yes, sa unapan na.
Maunangan aning kamot ko unta, i-clear ang vicinity sa ato ang slaughterhouse, nga wak na parkingan? Para makita na ng, mangilihaw diha magbitbit o yangi paggawas. See?
Una ingon jo.
That's why I am asking you, napo ba yun nagaparking karoon?
Wala na nagparking, wat to sila makuha sila hang karga.
Siya, ato ng panindigan ha? Mag-surprise sa gapon.
Ah, sige, okay, so.
Dayon, kabahin sa imo hang kuwan sa flag raising ceremony, nga imo hang i-question sa Mowa. So, last, ah, sa time pa ni Sir Buyet Sumatra, siya among Mido manager, na-agriha na mo nga nag-meeting me, ah, kau ba ni ma'am ibilin? nga dito pa siya sa slaughterhouse, nag-meeting me, nga diri me magatin o flag raising ceremony. Ang purpose na mo nga maka-update me, kunun sa yun mga update, kay dili jen mi kabalo dito, unsa yun mga update dito, kay layo kay me.
May, ay, inform, Madam Chair, speaker. Dapat to magig update ka diri re sa atong ili, ayam di check mano dili. Walak. You can get update information permit. Then. Why is it nga diri manjut momoan he, ang akong pangutanan, ano diri mo? It is always an open nga rason, diri ragu daw sila. Mangutan na bit ako, manawag po dini, naabay taga, taga slaughterhouse da nagaten o flag raising ceremony. That's why, akong gihang new dito, para dito tang tanan, as L E E dito tang tanan, then right after the our flag raising ceremony, naata instruction, naata mga information, para mubalik ta sa ato ang respective assignment ka equip ta.
Yes, Honorable Ebol, I think this is an executive matter na.
So, sorry po sir, kay wala po may instructions.
Excuse me, excuse me, ka jet lang, ah, I think this is an executive matter na. Ang ato ah na lang, we'll just wait for the memo nga himo on sa atong mayor, kunsa ang iyahang decision, kung asagun magflag ceremony. Kayo kita dini, we are only a kuwan.
Madam Chair, we have lagi already an approved communication from the Honorable Mayor, dated.
August five twenty-nine twenty-five?
August five twenty-twenty-five. August five twenty-twenty-five. We are now September twenty-four.
Ah, ah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Ah, as I run through with this, ah, I think maunis siya Honorable Joel, no? Ah, this is a proposal. Ah, Honorable Joel wrote a letter to the Honorable Mayor, Honorable Ramses Troy de Oligario. The, the, the subject here is proposal for revised attendance policy for flag raising ceremony. So, the Honorable Member Chairman of the Committee on Market is praying with this letter. He is proposing and praying that the Honorable Mayor will issue an executive order nga ang tanang mga nasa slaughterhouse mutuman sa iyahangi. nga ang tanang mga nasa Slaughterhouse mutu man sa iyahangi gi propose. Now, I would like to suggest that we will just, Honorable Joel, we will just ask the Honorable Mayor to formally execute his executive order in relation to this proposal. Kana na lang siguro para mahuman na ta. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, last.
I think it's not only for the Slaughterhouse. Ato na lang pong hangyo ng mayor, ang katung sa health center, katung
Oh, yes, correct.
Dito na lang po sila parad at sa pidaw, kaya kana na lang siguro atong himo not only for the Slaughterhouse.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that since there are a lot of um issues that are um considered here and may I, may I request that this matter be taken up through a committee meeting with the ah Committee on Market rather than ah man bidaw, dili magugdayo po ng ang discussion here, dili pwede thoroughly answer. So all the persons that are concerned, all the ah kanang significant persons that should be called and then ah they should be invited in the meeting and then sit down thoroughly regarding to discuss this matter.
Una kong i-suggest kanina, refer sa Committee on Market.
So I sumo, Madam Chair.
Okay, manaka.
Thank you.
Okay, next visitor.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Wala nagikulbaan ang taga-Slaughterhouse, kay kanina ko no, gipangkulbaan ni sila.
Ah next visitor is from ah Mido manggihapune. Kik, kik, kikay, kikoy? Ah, kamuna de ini. Okay, salamat kay makua kuwan gamay. Ah, Jorik Aspeh, okay, salamat. Ah, yeah, oo. And also Oh, why is it our municipal accountant is being invited in the person of James Humawan? Slaughterhouse. So would you like to? Okay, so Madam Chair, we'd like to acknowledge our handsome municipal accountant who is going to get married anytime soon and everybody is invited.
Good morning to our most honorable Madam Chair and to the honorable members of the Sanggaliyang Bayan. Good morning. I was invited though. I don't know why.
Is it part sa imuhang yapong committee, Honorable Ebol?
Actually, Madam Chair, what I requested for, right after my privileged message last session, the appearance of the local finance committee. Ah according to information, expanded na magutkaron ang local finance committee. That's why the the good gentleman, ah what is this accountant is here. But may may very question, na actually ang budget of ang treasure, actually mauna nga kuwang gi kuwan. I I I believe you have already an a a an idea about this. As what I have mentioned last regular session, I am asking why that the current price of fuel particularly ah on something, ah crudo, diesel in the local market ranges from fifty-four to fifty-five and our supplier price ranges sixty-two to sixty-three per liter. Per liter. So an an overhead of more or less eight pesos per liter. Now, I am asking, ilang litro ka na'to ang gamit on konsumo from Chief Executive, the Vice Mayor, Legislative Department heads, specially the Senate Department? Ilang kalitro namon ginagamit every day? Kaya yun na ata yun behin niya, eight pesos, more or less eight pesos per liter.
Can we ask our Budget Officer to be in front? Para ma ma kuwan, eh, dinigyo ka Madam para makita 'yung kakwapa. Kaya ato ang guapo nga, atong guapong accountant na, so dapat ang Budget Officer nga guapa na apon.
That's why, Madam Chair, I ah I just want, or perhaps all of us here, wanted only to be clarified, is it, ang ako ang panganpas, ang akong understanding, is it taas ang presyo kay wak patay kundong nga para ibayan ane? Is it that we are still on the process of collecting this kaning takses sa mga katawan? Mauna nga taas ang presyo kay wak patay mabayan nila? That's why, Madam Chair, this is just a kuwan, kaya may yun ta Karol, bibo kayo sa national government, Karol, uting kayay of mga mga koramson. Let us also try to see dito sa local government, Tunit.
Okay, inside one, sir.
Okay, ah to of our presiding officer, Mam Ami, good morning. And to this honorable buddy, good morning. Ah pertaining to your query, Sir Ebol, on the price of our gasoline, diesel, fuel, ah na siya gamay markup no compared sa prevailing market price ah how will I answer this? Ah it's also a challenge sa LGU to put up our own depot. That happens because we purchase gasoline or fuel or diesel daily, daily. We are using their depot and the price escalate, mubos, mutaas and then sila ang gamanig sa ato ang gasoline. We don't have our own depot. Diba ang province na na sila before? Oh, na sila. Para ang atong masat nga price is the current prevailing market price with the VAT, with the ah be documents needed, mauna na ang pwede na tong ma-markup. So I hope I I was able to answer your question.
Yeah. Nakita na'to Karol, ang, actually kagulang na'to, depot re diay. So why not put up or mubracita ng depot diay, kay every day mananatong ang consumer?
And besides, Madam Chair, if we will have our own depot, we can, we can ah, we can buy our own fuel on a cash basis. Ah, namantay approve nga budget. Oh, balito na'to cash basis. So mubalik tas sa katung gineingon ni Honorable Joel, ngano man nga, mas taas ang utang, mas barato man ang cash palitong, so ato tas cash.
Kung pwedir, manday na'to, Madam Chair nga mapangitan, siya pamage.
Yes, nagren magutas sa ilang depot. If we will have our own depot in the long run, mabawi na'to ang atong dispense sa pagestablish of depot sa pagka-save na'to ah presyo sa 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 gasoline o crudo.
Okay, so.
Ah, Madam Chair.
Last one, Madam Chair, while ako running ipadayon. I heard also that it's because also of ah delay of the transaction. But paswot, ang mga pagdagan sa'tong mga papeles ba, dugay kunokayo, dugay ang movement, which I have ah inexperienced this, no? Na'ko personal experience na na. Now, dili ba'ta makahimo dari sa ato ang sa LGU nga, atong ilimit, for example, kinalan abot sa imuhang table, Madam Budget Officer, within fifteen or twenty minutes lang, then dispose. Because ah, ako Madam Chair, wala na ko nagrenew o lisensya dari sipil. Nagrenew ko lisensya sa dumagete. But for the whole, akong gitaiman, na human ang ako ang transaction pagrenew sa lisensya for one hour and ten minutes. Na asilait specific time limit, dinaasay imohag good for ten or fifteen minutes raka.
Unsa na license to Honorable Ebol? Unsa na license imo gi, kuwan sa dumagete? Out driver's license, but agik apilidu?
Driver's license. I was able to renew my driver's license for one hour and ten minutes.
Marriage license.
Kaya naaman siya ikuwan, naaman siya is specific ra nga, time nga, dapat ka na imohad ya, naaraka sa fifteen to twenty minutes. Can we not do that? So that it it could, kana bang makatabang batasa? Kaya basi, nagmahimo ko ng isa karaso, unya nga, adugay, madugay ko ng mga papel, mugawas mo ng additional kuwan na pune, patong na pod.
Sa transactions na'to, sir, regarding anang payments, um we accumulate the trip tickets, manggod mong madugay na siya kay one-time payment, mangdaan na sa atong supplier, meaning different offices, isa agi-isa ra. And we cannot pay in installment, kaya kung unsa'y na bid ato na whole amount, mutu ang bayran. So when involved ang ubang offices, magdugay gudya, sir. And regarding about the citizens charter na imong pasabot, sir, katung na nakasulat, pilakaminit sa processing time, we already adapted that here. Our different offices, um they display the citizens charter um showing the number of minutes it will take for, kuwan na siya, sir, sa antired tape act, tulun na ka-types of transactions, we have simple, complex, ogkatong very complex, complicated transactions, na siya three, five, and twenty days. So sa amoa, sir, ah we ascertain, kung unsa na siya na-type nga transaction, if simple lang na siya, sir, at most guna, gawas guday na sa amuang mga papel. Pero when it take, when it will take time for us to look or audit, pre-audit the document, dito na siya magdugay, sir. But sa among offices, even some kay Mam, nakasulat dito ang date and time kung kanos na nadawat ang papel and makita po dino, dapat may reason nga nong nadugay. Sa mora po'to siya, sir.
And also sa fire, ang dugay gud ang fire. Kay national ang ilahan kuwan, diba? Ang system nila, online, diya't na masangit sa fire.
Kalayo guna.
Kalayo. Sangit, mauna ka complain ang kuwan, ang mga kuwan na'to Karol, kay dadugay sa fire gud. Yes, Honorable, ah alipot na.
Ang mangutan na ko, sir, kana, kung sa'yo purchase na'to, is it a diesel or a premium sa ato ang pagtubil?
Depende sa sakinan.
Depende sa kinan, sir, sign na, naka, nakamuwan siya.
So ang, ang sa kuwan kuwan, kay nakatubil ko, nangayo ko, na mag-ge-allocate para sa mga konsen, nakatubil ko. So ang nakabutang dito is premium, which is ang kalabanan na sa atong sakinan diesel man siguro. So kung pagtubil na ko dito sa Titan, ah halimbawa, binti kalitro, kung imo siya ipakanberto diesel, dili sila musugot kay katulog gihapon na kuwan, kay ang diesel mas barato besa kay sa premium. Ngano ngayon anak man? Dili, musugot ang ang Titan nga ipakanberto mo diesel, diba? Dapat unta kung twenty, halimbawa, sa premium, kung imo ikanberto diesel, basi mahimo siya binti uno o binti dos litros, pero diesel musugot, kay maoko na ang nakabutang. Dako na siya ug diperensiya, Mam, kay mas mahal ng premium, Mam, kay sa diesel.
Okay, recess for premium. Okay, recesses for premium.